Can't call meeting for order. First item, the municipal of Oakland, Wyoming, we would like to acknowledge and recognize that we are operating on treaty one and treaty two lands being the original territory of the Nishanabes and Dakota nations and the homeland of the Metis Nation. First item is the adoption of the agenda be resolved if the agenda for the October twenty first, twenty twenty five special meeting be accepted as presented. I apologize, there's no agenda to be passed out unfortunately they were provided to office so you'll have to do bear with us not very long agenda it's just a couple items so. Be resolved that it be accepted if perhaps somebody please move that from the council, Councilor McDonald, Tekener, Councilor Jones, all in favor. Carry on. Be resolved that the special meeting of council be recessed to allow council to hold a public hearing to receive representations from any person who wishes to make them. In respect to the local improvement plan number forty eight dash twenty twenty five in respect to building a new public workshop in Nazbitt, Manitoba. Moved by Councilor Hatch, Tekener, Councilor Gullett, all in favor. Okay, this is now your meeting here to if you wish to speak as to what we are has been planned as far as the new public workshop. This is your time to make representations about it. If you're going to speak all we do ask is that you state your name, your address and and or land number so we can make that known. And when you do it whether you're in opposition to the taxation, opposition to the shop, or opposition to vote. If you can do that, we appreciate it. So go ahead.
Me first.
Sure.
All right, you want nine hundred thousand dollars for what I consider to be essentially a bullshit, correct?
Not necessarily, no.
Okay, well, it's close enough. Well, the equipment you got now does work. It does fit, so I recommend you get the same equipment, but like Randall Parsons, one twenty on Fifth Street and one fifteen on Fifth Street, Moni's. Building you got now does work. It does fit, same equipment. As for your heat efficiency, you gotta get that big on your door so it can, you know, put some weather stripping down here that could probably save yourself a lot of money. Okay, now let's get on to this prepayment option and the finance option. I consider this a forever tax essentially. Cause based on a previous deal regarding the union in Wyoming, we cut a deal for ten years in two thousand and fourteen, that was up last year. Apparently, according to Joni, in two thousand seventeen, it was extended to two thousand and thirty-one. So I got a question, a couple questions about that. First of all, isn't that breach of contract? I'm assuming you are saying no.
Mr. Parsons, this public hearing is to do with the shop, not with any other project that has taken place prior to this, so this is just strictly on the shop.
Oh yeah, this is the three orders we need to the shop. So since I've got that in the way. It comes down to one thing, trust. We cut a deal for ten years previously and it was broken. Why would I believe you ever again when you broke the deal once? I'm done talking, have a good day.
You speak up Dave, they can't hear you in the back, speak up, speak up, the back needs to hear.
See your hand up there, go ahead.
Three five eight nineteen northeast. Building shop, I I can't get my head around not having a plan or engineered drawings before asking for money. If I want to build a shop myself, I have to let them know exactly what I'm building. The purpose and the drawings before any bills are received. This is not a levy item, but I see this as general taxation. One, some of the other things I want to address on top of my submission earlier today by email. One being more energy efficient, the building is two times the size so far as indicated. And I don't see that as being a savings for energy costs. Two, need to build a new shop as equipment is getting larger is a comment that was made. They haven't changed the size of graders in twenty years, even if you have a seven seven two John Deere and you go to an eight seventy-two, there's no significant difference in size. And the same with the one forty MCAT grader and the one sixty MCAT grader, there's no significant difference in sizes. So how do you justify this building, a shop twice the size? And we really have to think is this a want or a need? And as you can see by our submission earlier by email, the municipal act has safeguards that have been in place to prevent this sort of request. And it must be respected and this expense should be going through the municipality's general capital budget instead of a levy. And that's the only comment from both my husband and myself.
Okay, so are you in opposition to the taxation, opposition to the shop or to everything?
Opposition.
To everything?
Opposition to both the shop and the levies. I think if you have an existing shop that should be looked at first for expansion if there is any and cost effectiveness. And having a plan before you even start to ask for a dollar.
Yes, I see another hand in the back there, go ahead.
I'm just wondering if we have a DA system so we can actually all hear what's being said.
I'm trying to find it then, so I don't know what she didn't say.
Could we? But it's really hard to hear at that table and it's hard to hear.
Nobody agree? Okay, go ahead here.
Lucas Holbert, Cleveland. I do not oppose a shop. I get it. We got, we got. Sorry, I get the shop, I don't oppose. We got shops, they are nice, I get it, but nine hundred thousand dollars. But I need to budget it.
Don't notice, that's why it's gonna be done by debenture. So it's not budgeted, that's refreshing for money, that's why you have to have a public hearing.
So, but we, with the fullness, we get charged five thirty-nine and change for parole number?
Right.
That's, is that gonna be over?
That's the buyout, if it goes, that is what happens, which is done on a per parcel basis. There is a buyout that you can do at the beginning. If that is, which you change to just assess value or assess indications, then of course there would be no buy. So there's there's elements to it, but this being presented as if it's gonna be a per parcel basis and there would be a buyout. Now, the nine hundred thousand is not a hard and fast number, that is, estimate high, as municipal board says, put it higher. Same thing with the estimate on the interest rate. Interest rate, which is right now is probably around five, we've got it set at seven percent, so if something happens while we're doing this process. That we don't get ourselves caught where it's gonna be, we say volume is gonna be six, we don't want to be in that situation, interest rates are fluctuating. So most of this is gonna come down, we understand that, there's a neighboring municipality that is building a shop, it just put exactly the same as this. And it's coming up at and it's being in the final construction at seven hundred and seventy thousand. So the nine hundred thousand, as I said, is something we have to present to the municipal board or just get the start, everything started.
Okay, if that's what it is, then of course, if that's what that was, then that's what that was, but I talked to contractor just before I got here. That's what he does, build bullshit. Says seventy-five bucks a square foot will give you a nice shed. Like you guys are a hundred fifty, no.
I'm for heat and insulated as well.
Everything, I'm not sure of floor heat.
Yeah.
But put it to a hundred. It's still a third high, right? Like, I'm for convenience, I'm for transparency, I'm for common sense. This is just a little handy, I just like that, just.
Yeah, it moves the tender, if everything gets, if everything goes through, then it moves the tender to the project.
Sure, just for everybody's knowledge, we do have a shop drawing of this, but we can't proceed until we get. Go ahead, so we can't do any engineering or anything?
Yeah, so mine. I'm not opposed to the shop, I like I said, convenience is worth something, you guys run yard in. Few things different, but that's another story. One fifty is, a hundred is high, like never mind one fifty.
Appreciate the comment, thank you, yep.
Court Smith, Northwood, thirty-five eight nineteen. Um, my thing is, is you guys have no information here. Nobody knows what the hell's going on with any of this. Fisher's bringing up in for, he, no.
Nobody knows any of this stuff.
Why are you even asking for anything until you give us some information? Cause this is ridiculous.
You start somewhere, the municipal board requires they get approval first.
How about you give us some information to approve? We've got nothing, we have nothing to approve, other than a nine hundred thousand dollar debt. Don't you think you should come up with some kind of information for us, or do you just expect us to shoot for the stars? What the hell?
As I said, there is some drawings from it, it's gonna be.
Where are they?
Indications, well.
You're asking us to approve this, you're asking us to give you something, but you're not giving anything back to us.
We're giving you, what we're doing is giving you a public hearing so that you can voice your opinions, whether you want to shop or not.
On what?
Taxation stuff and everything else will come through.
On what information? You're asking these people to give you nine hundred thousand dollars to approve it without any information? This is crazy. Dave, you should know better than that.
This is way, this is the process that goes by with the municipal board.
No, it's not, you would give us information.
You wanna, what's the shop, the dimensions we have set up for?
Eighty by a hundred, three, three main doors, lunchroom slash office.
In four heat.
In four heat.
Floor heat, air exchangers, I mean.
Is this a wish or a dream or a need?
It's not a dream.
Wow, do we need it? Eighty by a hundred, that's a pretty massive shop for two graders, what, a loader and a tractor?
Dump truck, whatever else we've got.
Does the truck, anybody store dump truck indoors these days?
Well, you always wanna build this of what you need it for, you just don't do it.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm saying, a need or a drink.
Most farmers will say to you that if Tuesday they build a shop, they wish it would have built it bigger.
We're not a farmer, we're not.
We pay for it ourselves.
Yeah, the farmers pay for it, not, you don't ask a bunch of people to hand out a bunch of money prior to even knowing what the hell they're handing it out to. It's like going to the bank saying, yeah, I need a million dollars, no, I don't know what I'm gonna do with it, but.
I laugh at you.
Yeah.
So, sorry, before we go on with this, why don't we explain why?
Yep, that's what, exactly what I was gonna ask.
Joni, do you wanna go through what the board says, what municipal board?
No, not, no, sorry, not necessarily that, but in terms of why.
Why we want to, why we need.
Why we are wanting or needing a new shop.
And what is wrong with the old shop?
Well, the old shop right now is a single door unit. So we put two graders and one has to go in, another one has to go in and an angle, et cetera, et cetera. So if the last one in doesn't start, you can't get either one of them out. That's number one problem. Number two, you can't do any work in there because it's so full of, with some equipment that you can't get any work done in there if you wanna have work done. Do we have people that are gonna do the work? Maybe not so much now, but you never know what's gonna happen, or we have people come in and do the work rather than having it outside when that grader is down, so on and so forth. So there's more room that's required for this equipment. We have two million dollars worth of equipment and it's, I think it's just due diligence to make sure that that equipment is protected at whatever elements, et cetera. Theft, whatever the case may be, so not, not having it outside. So there's a lot of need here for sure for a shop. This was recognized in two thousand and nine by the Oakland council at that time, they wanted to build a new shop at that time. They couldn't get the funding through the growth fund, that's in the history book. And it's just a case that they wanted to replace it then, they didn't get it done at that time and now we're looking thirty years down the road and we're saying, it is time. That is, it's past its best before date.
We're not even twenty years down the road.
The shop was built in nineteen sixty-four.
Okay, yeah.
So it's more than thirty years old.
Well, you said in two thousand and nine, the last before date, so anyways, so, okay, keep on, tell us why we need to change it.
So, I mean, those are quite, the requirements that we need to have a proper building for our equipment.
You would like, what you'd need, you don't need one, you would like one.
Yeah, we, there is a like, sure there is a like, there's always a like to what you wanna have.
We like to everything, but there's not a need for everything.
Well, in a case like this, I think when you look at equipment, you wanna be able to get it out whenever you need it, rather than having it stuck inside the shed. You can't get either one of them out, but you wait for the repair people to come and get that last one repaired.
Now, if you say that again and maybe we can get Joni to say what she needs to say.
Well, Joni, municipal board, when we do our submissions.
Okay, so there is a lengthy process that has to be followed for a debenture. So typically a tender, if you send out a tender, they're good for thirty or sixty days. You can't get through the debenture process in that length of time. So what the municipal board suggests is that you provide an estimate of what the cost could be. And you include interest at about two percent higher than what the current interest rate is. That goes through for the public hearing, it gives people the opportunity to object or support. Anybody who is objecting will receive a letter giving them the opportunity to further object to the municipal board. Depending on what the municipal board hears, they may very well want to hold a public hearing of their own. They will make the determination based on what the proposal is, whether it falls within the authority of council to budget accordingly. And to borrow accordingly. They have the opportunity to either approve the bylaw, amend the bylaw, or defeat the bylaw. At that time, if they approve it, it comes back to council, council then goes out to tender knowing the maximum amount that they've got available to borrow. They receive tenders, they review the bids, council then decides whether or not it wants to proceed with the project. If it proceeds with the project, it gets underway and once the construction is finished, and of course with a tender, you've got a set bid price that the contractor has to adhere to. Once that is completed and you are near the end of the project is when public would be notified of their opportunity to do a prepayment. At that time, you know what the cost of the building is, you also know what the current interest rate is. Then you have to prepare an amending bylaw that goes back to the municipal board for their approval. So it's, it's a definite two-step process to the municipal board and it typically takes anywhere from four to six months to work its way through the process.
Now, Joni, you just said that you need this information to go to the municipal board, why don't you have it for us?
What the municipal.
Anything, drawings, something out of the blue. Like I said, you guys seem to have a clue of what's going on, in for heating, all this stuff, but you're not telling the rest of us, why?
What council is aware of is what some surrounding municipalities have done with respect to building shops.
Again, why don't we have any of this information?
Because we don't have their tenders, we don't have their floor plans, we have an idea of what their construction was.
Okay, you have an idea of what you're looking for, why don't we have that information?
That is something council has just indicated, the most recent shop that had pricing that is very current is a one hundred by sixty. It had three overhead doors.
Again, here we are at a meeting without any of this information and you're asking for us to either be for it or against it. This is crazy, I think this meeting should be adjourned, you guys go back, figure out what you actually want, give it to us. And then let's talk about this again in the future when you guys have a clue what you're doing.
So the thing is, is that we.
Craig is sitting here.
We've got a drawing, that's all we've got.
Why don't we have?
Well, the thing is, is that we're presenting that now, it's presented to you in letter form, say it was gonna be nine hundred thousand dollars. And the cost was gonna be associated with per parcel basis and that's what the public hearing is about at this point. So, that's a wrap. I didn't forget one thing when I was mentioning something about the old shop we have. The structure has been struck a couple times with the main frame in the inside by graders. And so there is a structural issue with that, not, doesn't.
Is it on the whole?
Doesn't mean it's gonna, doesn't mean it's gonna collapse, but it's one of those things that's there.
Anyhow, I might as well, you can tell I'm against vote, right?
Okay, if you're opposition to vote, that's fine, that's what we know.
Daniel Burns, Northwood, twenty-eight nineteen. I'd like to jump in, this is Ken Hall, I have an engineer, I'm from consulting engineering and we've designed lots of these shops for RMs, so. I'm listening and I'm hearing and I've done a lot of local improvements for RMs as the RMs engineer, so pretty familiar with that process as well. My opinion, I think you are going about a little bit backwards, you would normally have some engineering done upfront with a cost estimate. So you actually know what you're presenting as part of your local improvement. If you haven't done that yet, I, my opinion would be that's a mistake. You know, the council may have to spend some money to do that engineering, at least some preliminary engineering, have a floor plan, have a cost estimate. Then you proceed to the local improvement, I feel like you're kind of backwards on, on that, I don't know how you're actually are proceeding this way, it makes no sense to me. But that would be pretty common that I do it, a couple of them a year for RMs for sewer, water, infrastructure, for buildings, so. Probably disagree with that process. Listening kind of to what you're talking about, I also feel it's important that I note that. An RM shop, now the building codes have changed, this isn't a farm building, so I respect your seventy-five or a hundred square foot, I think you're way low. We just designed one for Mooseman, our, in Saskatchewan, eighty by a hundred is two point one million as a tender. So when I saw this, our public hearing, I looked at it, I thought nine hundred, I thought, how many square feet are they building? And I figured, I'm like, I think you're way low. So, that's my opinion that you're gonna go out, and there's a bunch of reasons for that. The code has changed, it won't, it isn't qualified as a farm building, so you're a commercial building. So if you're comparing to other cost estimates that are designed as a farm building, there's a huge difference because you're a commercial building. It may need to be designed, this will sound crazy, but in the engineering world, there's a post-disaster structure, which even increases more cost to it. You have to have ventilations, you have to have NO sensors, all of that requirements for fresh air ventilation, your mechanical systems are immense and very expensive compared to what. Most of the rural community is probably expecting, and I grew up on a farm and I know what it was like to have a farm shop, this isn't a farm shop. So your pricing, I feel is low. I, I talked to, and I pulled up small tenders before I came out today, two hundred is on the bottom end, two twenty-five for a shop like this for other RMs that we've done. So that's where I would expect your number to be, so if you're at one fifty, I feel like you're probably low. If you go out at this approach and then you go out and get it in, designed. So also it makes a difference if you're gonna go through a design-build process or a design-bid-build. So there's two ways of hearing construction, you can go to contractor and say, give us an eighty by a hundred, that's what we want. It's typically not gonna be probably what you're gonna want, like you're gonna get what they wanna give you for that price, but. Normally, the engineer would work with the council, come up with what you want, work on cost assessing budgets, come up with where the price needs to be and then go for tender and hopefully you get four or five or six bids and then you're able to proceed. So, you know, you can do a design-bid-build or, or just as strictly go to a contractor and get a price, and those are two different things. But code is dictating a lot of what you're gonna need, I'm worried your price is gonna come in a lot higher.
What's your average engineering cost per?
On a, like doll?
Yeah, what's your cost?
On a building like that, you're probably, as a percentage, you're looking at a construction cost, like five to seven percent would be engineering, tip of fees on it.
What's your estimate on what they're gonna get for nine hundred thousand?
Forty-five hundred square foot, yeah, basic, basic, but not likely code compliant.
Right.
So there's where I, that's where my concern is, is the building code side of things and what would be needed.
Now, what's your cost on pre, pre-design for?
Or floor plan and costing, like.
Yep.
You know, you can do that for, if it's a simple floor plan and a budget cost estimate, like ten, probably ten thousand to.
So what worth investing before we go to two point five million by the time this is said and done?
That's, it's two different approaches to that experience of a project, and I'm just speaking from my experience.
I think this is backwards as well.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But I'm not opposed to a shop, you know, I, I think a shop's important and you need to have a shop, and like I said, we've designed lots of these and, and it's important. You guys need it, but I'm worried that the costs are gonna blow out of control and you're gonna go to, to the board, get approval for a debenture of nine hundred and then go to tender and hope well, one point eight. Now, we're way out to lunch, now what do we do? Well, you can, if you do, if you do that preliminary engineering upfront, then you can proceed with a better guess to the board.
Dan Swol, Memphis, twenty-six seventeen. So the current shop is about twenty-eight hundred square feet, full graders fit in it. Actually, I spoke to a former counselor here a couple minutes ago and he said if the graders are angled properly, you can get a D-seven cat in between them. So there, there is space. The, the idea of going from twenty-eight hundred square feet to eight thousand square feet, I mean, that's a want, that's not a need. And I agree with, with Mr. Smith and with Daniel Burns. Council has not done the homework necessary to put on a public hearing and give people the information they need to either oppose or, I agree. There's, there is a process and you haven't followed it.
So are you opposition to it or?
I'm in opposition with the, the bylaw, the way it's currently structured.
Okay, thank you. You're here?
Mr. Swol, again, I just have a question to the council. You refer to other shops that you kind of near this maybe. I'm just wondering if you can tell me those other shops, were they done by levies or were they done by general tax?
I have no idea.
And I think that's something that should be looked into as well, just for common sake.
Go back? Go ahead.
I play Corey, northeast, twenty-four, seven, eighteen. I, I heard mentioned of the five hundred and, let's round it off to five forty so I don't have to say cents. So what happens, like this gentleman here that just mentioned about the shop could be up to two hundred dollars a square foot? Say it comes in less than nine hundred thousand, what do you do with the money that you raised from us? If it comes in less, what do you do?
If it comes in less, we don't, we don't start until we get approval from the board as to how much the debenture is gonna be exactly. At that point, you'll know exactly what the cost is gonna be, exactly what the interest rate is gonna be, and exactly what your prepayment will be. It won't be any money held back in any way.
So you could put out that number based on nine hundred thousand?
Again, it's an estimate to get the process started for debenture, because a debenture can take a long time, that's why we're doing it now. If we didn't do it this fall, we wouldn't be able to do it in next year's budget.
So the debenture is set then?
The debenture is not set.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to put forward an objection to the following local improvement of forty-eight, twenty twenty-five based on the following reasons. Number one, the inadequate transparency and clarification of what the proposed debenture is funded. Number two, overestimated and uncertainty of the cost, it could be underestimated as well as overestimated. Lack of proof of concept regarding the validity of funding this project to directly benefit the ratepayers of Oakland, Wyoming. The ones paying the bill on a per parcel charge. Unfair or inequitable cost allocation. So those are my four objections. Justification of a local improvement of forty-eight, twenty twenty-five needs to be met. As a longtime ratepayer of this municipality, I ask myself, how will my paying five hundred and forty dollars per parcel improve the functionality of the RM? To where I can say to myself and my fellow ratepayers and neighbors, yes, the nine hundred thousand municipal shop was money well spent. I can think of so many other less glamorous projects to spend money on that would have a more direct benefit to the ratepayers. We as a municipality want to be proud of where we reside, but it doesn't always take new to do this. We need consistent employees who make our roads pristine. We need to follow at least minimum standards of grading and snow plowing our infrastructure. Having weekly road maintenance the way it used to be done would be even better. Please consider all your ratepayers, not just some of them, but all of them. All of them pay your wages and your per diem. We value the service a municipal council provides. Just please consider what you hear from everyone regarding forty-eight twenty-two five.
Is somebody else in the back there tomorrow?
Glenn Kirby, Southeast twenty-four eight nineteen. I understand council is obviously in support of what they put before us. I also understand that this public hearing is a legal requirement to allow you to move forward. My question is this, what does council need to hear from us tonight? That will make you step back, reconsider this, and then bring us information that we require so we can make a good decision.
Public hearing is for your purpose. You give that, that feedback back to us and we'll take it from here.
Well, we have just given you feedback, but you're still not saying precisely what it is you need to hear from us so you can take our opinions into your consideration, step back and reevaluate.
Right, so if you, if you're in opposition to this, you have to state that. And that'll be documented. It'll go to the board before we can see, we get to first reading tonight, we have to do that as a bylaw requirements. That goes to the municipal board again. To, to allow us whether we proceed or not with all your oppositions or, or in favor of. That will go to the municipal board. The municipal board at that time will decide whether they have to have a hearing because they didn't like what they, what, what they heard from you. That's what, that's why this process is here. And if they decide they're gonna have a hearing, they'll have a hearing. Nothing can proceed until after that hearing is done and they give a decision.
So regardless of what we heard tonight, you are still pushing this forward to the municipal board for consideration. Is that what you're telling us?
That's what we're doing.
Why are we here? Why are we here? It's your time to speak up.
We are.
So I'm Northwest twenty-two eight nineteen West.
Just wanted to say, before we go any further, I wanna, or we'll say I'm opposed to what you've put on the table. I wanna say Mr. Corey's reasons as my reasons as well. Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. Northwest twenty-two eight nineteen West, Giselle Corrival. I'd like to get it on record that I'm opposed to the levy and I'm opposed to the building until we get more information and proper information given to us and justification as to why we need such a big shop.
Me again. Is there anybody here that is in favor of this? Everybody signed that sheet when you walked in the door, right? Is there anybody here in favor of this that thinks that this should go to the municipal board?
I do.
Um, can you be in favor if you don't know what's happening and why you wanna go?
So who's in favor?
I do.
Okay, can you say why? And oh, it's one, one of all.
This, that's getting away from what this meeting is all about. You're not supposed to be cornering other people as to what their decisions are. If they wanna make a submission, that's up to them to do.
But most, most of these people don't know that they have to stand up.
It's not up to you to start questioning the individuals as to how they're gonna filter anything.
But I think you're.
This is, this is a meeting, so if you wish to make a representation, do so. If you say you're in opposing to it, do that. We'll have it documented. We'll get you into the, so goes to the municipal board. This is, this is fifty people out of, out of municipality, it's sixteen hundred people.
Yep.
Don't say that you're the majority here.
I'm not saying that, but I'm saying that you're not giving everybody the information. You're, you should be saying, everybody sitting here needs to stand up and either oppose.
No, that's not the purpose. That is not the purpose.
You just said that.
Thank you.
Can't have both ways, Dave.
In the back there, hand up.
Uh, Greg Wesley, Southwest eight nineteen. I oppose it and every reason that gentleman said, and if every person has to stand up here and say that just to get this BS out of the road. Fun to start.
Go ahead, right here.
Donna McIntosh, Northwest three five eight nineteen. Um, in regards to all of this, I, you could put it on record that I'm opposed to both the shop and the, uh, levy. Joanie or whoever needs to explain this, exactly what is the process procedure? I'd like, I'd like to clear this up right now so that anybody that is for it, against it, if you are against it, objecting it, what is the procedure with no changes later on? Oh, we're not accepting this. We're not accepting that. Oh, you should have done this, you should have done that. I would like to know what that is for everybody's benefit. The entire sixteen hundred people of this municipality deserve to know that upfront.
So I went through the process following tonight. Anybody who has made opposition will receive a letter. It will outline what it is you need to provide to the municipal board. It is within a thirty day timeframe. The municipal board will review what they see. They will make their determination as to whether or not they are prepared to approve the bylaw, amend the bylaw, defeat the bylaw, or their requirement to hold a second public hearing.
Okay, thank you. What do we, what, what do we as the people have to do to make it clear to every one of the counselors, Reed, that if you are objecting, um, it seems to me like it's a dead issue already. You're gonna push forward. I, I don't understand. I'm disappointed in every one of you for that reason. That is not right for anybody. Nobody, you can't sit there like you just said, Dave, like you can't assume. But you guys have all assumed this is gonna, you're gonna fight to, to move this ahead. I find that very unfortunate.
We're not fighting anything. What we're trying to do is work forwards. We have a good shop, municipal shop for our equipment. That's what this council has sat down and decided. It's, we looked at several years ago to make, get a new shop because of required. There's a best before date for everything. I don't care what it is, including people. And this, this is something that is a need, is a want. Sure, you can say, you say both sides of that. But it's a matter that somebody has to quit kicking the can down the road and say, let's just keep going with this shop until it falls over. And then you will have to say, okay, now we'll make it. We looked at this five years ago and it was gonna be six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And somebody said, no, we can't do it. Council, we can't do this, too much money. Then it went up. Then came COVID and then all this kind of stuff. Then all the lumber costs went up. All this stuff keeps rising in cost. Where do you stop and where do you say, well, enough is enough, let's try, do something. So this council sat down and said, listen, we got some preliminary drawings. We talked to other municipalities, they're doing their shots like this, we'll put it forward. We needed to venture it because we don't have any kind of money to just put it up. So we go through the debenture process. The debenture process says you gotta do this for, get an estimate, get an estimate for the, what it's gonna cost for interest rate. How are you gonna do it on taxation? Are you gonna do it through settlement? Are you gonna do it through per parcel? We put all those together and looked at everything it was gonna be, and this was the most favorable way to do it. Council sat down and said, yes, we think this is a good thing for the municipality. Some people think it's not, and that's your prerogative. That's why we have the hearing. We're not here to say we're gonna spend your money and just, and somebody say go two million. It's not gonna be two million dollars. We're going for nine hundred thousand as top value with this, uh, debenture. We can't go beyond that because the, that's what the municipal board has ruled. So that's what we're here.
The engineering, we had talked to a fellow, the engineering and the design was gonna be around with twenty-seven thousand dollars. And, and we could not spend that in advance prior to this hearing.
Sorry, can you say that again or in here?
The engineering and design for this shop was gonna be costing us twenty thousand dollars. So we, we could not spend that money in advance in this hearing. That's why there's no, nothing to give you for drugs.
I just kinda wanted to say, um, we all know, I mean, it's, it's pretty common sense to know that things go over and above. I mean, did, did the new office go over and above?
No, no, actually the office went down.
Um, it may have timed out by now.
Anyway, and that's, that's not part of the discussion.
You said you spent a hundred and fifty thousand dollars buying the shop inside of Walonisa and the one grader sits in there. That's my understanding.
There's no grader, there's no grader kept in Walonisa.
Well, why are you talking about two graders in the shop if you're parked in one in Walonisa?
There is not one parked in Walonisa, never has been.
So what did I buy the shop in Walonisa for then?
It's got other equipment in there. It's got the loader for Walonisa, it's got the, the other tractors in there.
I was told by a pretty long, you had the grader sitting there because one operator lives in Walonisa. The actual, the actual dump truck is parked in there and there's a couple of more tractors and the town, uh, snow clearing equipment.
Can we just kind of?
Uh, Glenn Curry, thirty-seven Sierra Street in Nesbit. Um, so if this problem of this built, old building has been happening or recognized for how many years now? Um, has there never been any talk of any money being put, put aside to start building something in the first place? And start working at ground zero and expecting everybody to start coughing up like this. The whole thinking, um, we better pocket some money because down the road soon or even now, we have to start looking at this.
Sure.
Um, and the other thing is I am opposed to the bylaw and, and the whole, uh, what is happening with the shop.
The, one of the things that we mentioned that we should, uh, should not do it now, we should just start putting the money away so we can build it in ten years. Well, if we do that, we're gonna be taxing everybody on a hundred thousand dollars a year to put the money away. So it's gonna be the same whether you get a debenture or you get a taxation start now. So. It just gives us a shop now.
I was just talking about nine years ago when this was recognized.
Can we change this?
Why wasn't there a little, you know, account stress? We better start opening it. That's a long time ago.
Okay, in the back here.
Yes, John Robinson, I own the, uh, West half of four seventeen eighteen. One of the biggest things here that really disturbs me that hasn't been brought up is that the municipality of Oakland raised the funds for this. We went into amalgamation with those funds. Where did those funds go? There was talk, I know, I know I was pretty young at the time, but there has been talks for years about the shop. That's inevitable. But the funds were raised and this council and especially the head of council is responsible for the reserve fund deal liquidated on other projects. That money was specifically raised for infrastructure for a new shop in Nesbit or municipal building and this council spent it somewhere else.
We have, we, uh, we have the municipal audits going back to, way to amalgamation. If you wanna come to the office and show which, where you have that. I, I think we would be interested to see where you, where we spent that money because nothing's been done like that. There's no, there is no money set aside for shop in the funds at amalgamation.
Are you denying there was a reserve fund?
There is a reserve fund, but not for the building.
Well, you spent that reserve fund, you spent it last year on the village office.
No, no.
And you're talking about buildings here? You're saying what the shop has in Nesbit has itself by date. What about the village office? The quotes at the time, the council was telling us to build the new building, whether it was in Nesbit or Walonisa, would cost the same. And you guys chose to refurbish an old building for thirty grand less. You could have saved so much money on fuel efficiency, energy savings for the building, but you didn't.
I think you need to check your figures, Mr. Earl, because I don't think they're correct. Thank you very much.
Well, there's other reasons too that I object. The other reason is there are two members on council here who are theoretically elected. How many members of or two had votes for those two, vote ballots for those two councillors?
Thank you very much.
I didn't see any.
That's not, this, the hearing is on the shop, but sorry, not, but on elections.
Well, you also recognize that we're on Aboriginal land. Do you recognize that each and every landowner here was given sovereignty by Her Majesty Queen Victoria when she issued letters of patents? Therefore, you don't actually have authorization to levy any taxes on us. That was given by Queen Victoria and her agents before the province of Manitoba existed. And you wanna levy more taxes on us? Like this is ridiculous. This is the same thing as the Aboriginals. The settlers, along with the Aboriginals, signed a contract with the Crown and the Crown screwed us all over.
Let, let's get back to it. Please have a chair and we'll get the rest of people that opportunities to talk.
Peter Dennis here.
Jerry Hillbrand, Northeast twenty-three eight nineteen. As somebody who's worked in your shop in, in Nesbit about ten years ago, uh, it's not an ideal facility for what you have for machinery. If you take into consideration, I don't know what a grader costs anymore because I've been away from it for too long. But you can't put a grader in a shop that's gonna fall down around you. And if you need somebody to come in and do any major work on that machine, you need room for the person who's doing the work and the equipment they have to bring to do it. You don't have an overhead crane in the shop, that's normal. But the guy who comes to work on the machine has to have his crane to work on that machine. If the roof is too low, he can't pick something up. Or if there's not room enough to get the vehicle inside, it's a big job. I support the new shop. I've not really happy with the presentation. I'd like to see, uh, when you guys move forward that you have drawings that we can say. I was expecting to see a drawing, so I'd like to see that.
Can we kind of change this to approving money for engineering? Like if it's a base, though, ten grand or fifteen grand, can we do that rather than jumping to nine hundred thousand?
Hearing is on this bylaw, so we have to keep it that. Back.
Sorry, you go ahead. I've already filed a letter of objection, so I'll skip the, uh, particulars on that part, just a couple of questions. So if the collective voice here is not enough to stop the wheels in motion on this project and you guys run this way over budget, then what happens?
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
If the voice here tonight does not stop the wheels in motion on this project and you guys run this way over budget, then what happens?
It can't go over that budget of nine hundred thousand. That's the maximum that we can do as far as the municipal board goes. Anything over nine hundred thousand, we'd have to have another public hearing. So we can't go above that, so.
And then is there, is there a limit to levies at all? Cause we were just imposed with levies last year that were paying till twenty-twenty-nine. So like, is there more coming in next year or?
Well, I'm not sure which, which levy, which levy is it?
Recreation. Well, it's recreation and the waste of recycling.
Yeah, so that, that's a standard one because we have those within the budget itself.
And the RF now what?
Pardon me?
And the RF now?
Well, RF now is gone.
Yeah, but we never got a choice.
There was a, there was a public hearing on it as well, but anyway, that's.
I didn't get her name.
What was the name? What's your name in the back there? I'm sorry.
Melissa Wagner. We submitted an online, a letter of objection though.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes.
Terry Nickel with twenty-seven seven nineteen. Uh, I followed, uh, this Oakland deal for quite a while. And I think we're, as councillors, and we're missing the vote here. You have a problem down there and a lot of municipalities do. And we're contractors ourselves, getting staff and missing staff, whatever, keeping staff. Your turnover of staff is pretty incredible, right? You all agree with me there? Your grader folks are only there so long and how many quit this year?
Two, we've had them for five years.
Two, okay.
Three.
Three, whatever. Your grading and your snow plowing is not a thing to be proud of. I understand you have two grader people right now, do you, or no?
Two new grader operators.
We have three old graders.
Three?
Yeah.
And I understand some of them have never had much experience moving with snow. So we're talking this massive mouth here. And, and like if you're going to, uh, spend this money, they're talking the interest. You've got employees' wages, you've got shreds on buildings, you've got heat on buildings. In the past, you have had to hire private contractors to bail you out when you hook railways and whatever. Isn't it not time? Isn't it not time, we're wasting our time here tonight, the Oakland, our Oakland, Oakland municipality looks at tendering out their grading and snow plowing. Kind of like, some municipalities do, I understand, but just, we're talking something here that isn't working. It does not work in folks. And just tender it out, no new shop, no interest, no this, no that, whatever. Keep your shops you got, put in the truck, if you need a quick fix somewhere, uh, do that. The money you're talking here, if you tender out, and when you have tendered out this grading and snow plowing, it's a class act, what's been done. You, you have an issue in, in Oakland. Cornwall's municipality has a shop, I'm not sure, it's not a big one, they have a couple of graders. But they have, they're fortunate, they have two operators there, they're pretty special. They'll be on their second pass in Cornwall's when Oakland is a week away from getting west of the highway. It, it's bad, folks, it is really, really bad. Freddie, you know what?
Did Cornwall's not tender out their grading previously?
No.
Yes.
Not that I know of.
Yes, they did.
They did, yeah. I'm sorry, I'm not getting into that. This is about this, but, so, let's keep it to the shop.
The cost down is getting so high in building, which we all know. It's almost like you said, it's almost up thirty, forty percent or fifty in a few years. I just can't see this mushrooming into a big thing and you trying to keep staff to do all this. And Jerry's right, you're going to work on a grader, you need the truck in there with a crane on it, whatever. But I'm thinking you're getting yourself in a position where you don't have to be. I think, uh, you should look at tendering it out. And for that reason, staffing, grading, snow plowing, the way it's been, I'm definitely opposed to it for that reason.
Okay, thank you.
Donna McIntosh again. Um, so as, as Terry just stated, can we ask each council member to please get on board? Get some numbers and look at that and give us something to think about here?
Well, council.
When it comes, because this is about money tonight, we have to, this is a big rush because of the municipal board. I know they have their rules, but does that always make it right?
Council's listening and we go back and sit at the council table and discuss those kind of things, yes.
Like, I, I just want to say, I understand everyone's objection in terms of us not having blueprints, engineered pricing, anything. I understand that, one hundred percent. Um, I know some of you that are in opposition, uh, right now. I don't necessarily know if it's in opposition of actually having a new shop or opposition in the process that we're doing it. Because, you know, three years ago, I had lots of people coming up to me like, make sure the new shop's built in Nesbit. Make sure the new shop's built in Nesbit. We are hoping if we do build a new shop, that it will be in Nesbit. I, I want to apologize for not having the concrete documents that, yeah, most of us think or know should, we, we should be having and giving out. Um, unfortunately, the process this way, uh, with the municipal board, it's kind of wonky, I, I understand that. Um, and like I said, I hear your, your opposition. And hopefully, going forward, or we could change something in how we, we do these types of things. Because yes, being able to see, um, what we're wanting would be a lot easier instead of, you know, whatever anyone else is thinking in their heads, what we're trying to build.
You don't want to spend the money? Is that why you haven't gone through that process?
We have to put it to the project, we'd have to present it as to, you know, come up, put it into the budget of, say, next year and say, okay, we want to get architectural plans and then we'd have to go to the public hearings.
Why didn't you start this like six months ago or a year ago or ten years ago?
Couple of years ago, a couple of months ago, we, we've been thought about it for years.
Couple of things, there was a comment made here from the head table a couple of months ago that, uh, there's only fifty or sixty people in the room. I, I think you should more base that on the number of rural numbers are in this room with the farm people that are here. Because that's where the money's coming from. If you look at the way it's set up, there's seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. The way your nine hundred dollar debenture, or nine hundred thousand dollar debenture is, is mentioned. There's seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand of that coming from the rural community. So I wouldn't make light of, until you know how many rural numbers are actually represented here. And I, I don't, I don't buy what councillor Jones has said, although I respect him very much. I don't think that we can use the municipal board as an excuse. Council could have put out tenders. Even though they're only good for supposedly sixty days, it can be plus or minus when you, when you get a tender. So these tenders could have, could have been out there, you could have come with a plan, you could have come with very close to the right numbers for, for us to have something to look at. Very poor planning.
Thank you.
And let me add that due to the postal strike, the notice to the public didn't work out very well. Now, whether there's fault in that or not, I don't know, but council could have looked at that and said, hey, we got to push this back.
Thank you.
Justin, I wanted to ask you, fifteen, eight, nineteen. Uh, you guys said you guys have been buying this for two years. How much money did you set aside in that two years?
There is money, there is money that's in the building fund, as it is right now.
So how much is in that for us?
At the end of this year, it'll be just under a hundred and fifty thousand.
Just under a hundred and fifty thousand.
And you guys are keep setting aside, if you guys just spend it and then want everybody else to favor?
That's in the building fund, but that goes, that goes towards the building, so again, we'll lower the amount if, but anyway.
How much is in the accumulated reserve?
There's no accumulated reserve.
The general reserve then.
General reserve?
I'm not sure. Uh, yeah, I'm not sure on that one. Sorry.
It was right around the fifty thousand dollar mark, but I thought we used some of it, um.
Are you talking to your equipment reserve?
No, just general reserve.
You're talking surplus, you're talking general surplus, not a reserve fund. And that the auditors presented today was.
I got it here. So the total, the total amount in reserve right now is, looks like, uh, surplus. No, I'm just looking at the reserve funds. Just, you're asking reserve fund? All the reserve funds put together are one point five million?
And I, I'm objection to both of these.
Okay, thank you.
This is a question. So it just seems, seems to be a lot of dissatisfaction as how this thing is being done. Everybody's saying this should have been actual quotes. Gentlemen said to draw this up professionally and give it to a contractor, which would be required to get an accurate quote. Would cost twenty grand. Would it be, would it have been okay for you guys to go ahead and do that without having this hearing?
Well, you'd still have to have a hearing, doing it for the shop, we would have to do, again, we're going to be looking at trying to get a debenture, whatever the case may be.
So if council would have wanted to have engineering costs and drawings done up, you could have included twenty or twenty-five thousand dollars in the twenty twenty-five budget, knowing that that was getting spent regardless of whether or not you were going to be able to get the approval for the funds to build.
So this way, if we could get the venture for all the engineering costs and it's all part of the building.
Wouldn't that have been a lot better from a perspective of you presenting real information to, to us instead of saying, oh, like?
I mean, ideally, you have, you know, have all the construction down, you can put heat in floor, this is an electrical panel block system, it'll be this, this is what the code is for this. We could have done all that, but at the end of the day, we still have to apply for the debenture.
Yeah, for sure, but at least you're applying for it for the.
Yeah, at least we'd have the information.
Yeah.
And.
Point taken.
Maybe firm numbers, right? Which would be better.
Sure, sure. We still couldn't have firm numbers as far as percentage for banks, et cetera, what, what it's going to cost.
Yeah, but.
We don't, we don't have those, but.
My, my friend contractor said seventy-five bucks a foot, you're saying two?
Two hundred.
Huge variation.
Exactly.
If we would have some deal done, yeah, obviously.
It, it's, it's, it is a difficult thing, I understand it, I appreciate the comments.
Joni, correct me if I'm wrong, if we, if this does go through, we put out tenders, we get our quotes back and we are not happy, does that bylaw still?
We, we can say no.
You just don't proceed.
We don't proceed. That's a possibility.
Donna McIntosh again. I just wanted to say that you're, I, I don't, people cannot make an informed decision at all on hearsay. And even, you know, I said, well, we hope it's going to be in Nesbit, well, what?
It's not that it's a hope it's going to be in Nesbit, I'm just saying, I was trying to say, what I was trying to say is when, when I first came on council, the, some of the people in this room were saying, no, the, the shop needs to be in Nesbit. And I said, yes, the shop will be in Nesbit, it's not going to be in Wauwunisa, not in the town of Wauwunisa. It, if it is built, it'll be in the exact same plot as in Nesbit.
You're only one vote on that, Frank.
There hasn't been any other, uh, discussion but in Nesbit.
Yeah, up until, uh, vote. The same as the office, the office was going to be in Nesbit too, Frank.
Yeah, I'm, I'm telling you now that the shop, if built, on my word, is going to be in Nesbit, Manitoba, not Wauwunisa. Like I said at the very beginning.
Unless they outvote.
It's not going to happen, it's going to be in Nesbit.
Nobody on this, no, sorry, nobody on this council has said anything but that, and I think.
I can, I, I will, I will bet my reputation that Steve is going to vote for Nesbit, that Mike will vote for Nesbit, that Riley will vote for Nesbit, that Bob will vote for Nesbit, and that Craig will, will vote for Nesbit.
It's unanimous, it's, it's, there's no doubt about it.
Did you put up a bond on that? Like, when you voted, you closed, you closed doors?
No, no, when, when we vote for this, it's going to be an open council.
No, but it was already, you get this far, was it all, all six of you voting for it?
Yes.
This shop's a replacement of your existence, your existence to be abolished?
How do they know?
It's, it's got, it's best to send it too, we've already been warned about that.
Say, those costs accounted for.
Yeah, but note that's a separate cost, we've put money aside for that, it has to be, for our order to do it.
Yeah, that could be.
Remediation.
Standard cost. And can you use gas tax?
No, we tried that.
You have one, twice?
No, you cannot. We, 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 we did try.
Patricia World Kingdom, uh, just back to levies and general tax. Is there any way to do this under general tax?
Well, we do, it, it, we've done some calculations within, what, what you have within the office as far as our assessed value. If you, if you change it to assessed value, goes on that, then of course what happens, there'd be more put on, more taken off of residential and more added on to farm. So residential would go down and farm would probably come up quite a bit.
So with clarity being said, uh, we're looking at doing drawings and all that kind of stuff, getting an engineer hired. An engineer hired would go through the general tax because you guys move money around all the time within departments, correct?
It'll go, it'll go into, it'll be part of the project.
It'd be part of?
It'll be part of the project, all engineering costs will go into the project.
But if you have to have money upfront to do that in order to bring it back to us to look at, then is that something that you would get the money from?
You know, considering.
I know you can't use the gas tax, I know that's not.
We'd have to wait till next year's budget to put in next year's budget, and start, start at that time.
My understanding, when I did some research, was this would take about two years to have it come to fruition. Um, is what it all balances out the process.
The shop, you mean?
Yes.
Well, if we get it done, you know, within, and everything's approved, et cetera, et cetera, and it come, you know, that could be done next year, that shop.
So the levies, I think, if we could do general tax, I, I think that needs to be reviewed again. Take a look at it, because you have a lot of young families trying to make you go out here, we know farming tariffs, all this has impacted a lot of people. You don't want to lose them.
You would like to see more on the farmland and less in the homestead?
Not necessarily. I think it has to be reviewed and how it's going to be paid for. I think it's a pretty heavy levy. Considering we have those already.
Sure, and again, until we have, you know, tax, the, the percentage of, of the loan or the debenture, et cetera. All those numbers aren't known.
But in order to do that, we have to have the drawings and what's your wish list?
Oh, we've got some spending.
My question, uh, and I didn't get here till a little bit later, but.
What's, I'm sorry, your name and address?
Oh, sorry, Larry Nestraski, Southwest, where are you, something? Um, my question is residential properties, are they getting a levy the same as I'm getting on my farm property?
Seventy, I think it's seventy-six dollars per parcel.
Where's the, I got hearing aids, okay.
Seventy-six dollars a per parcel, that's, that's residential and farm, or building?
Per roll.
And per, per roll.
Per year.
Per year, for ten years.
For ten years.
My other question, as I recall it, um, when, when, uh, there was, when they were, you were deciding that the office wasn't going to stay in Nesbit. Um, I don't think there was a lot of, a lot of support from the, from the rural communities for the office to move, to move, and it's still got moved. Um, now that you're going to build a new building, maybe the smart thing to do would be to sell off the property you have in Wauwunisa, which we're probably paying the tax on, and building your office in conjunction with the, uh, shop as it used to be in Nesbit.
Okay, thank you. Backward.
And I am opposed, by the way, to, to this, uh, as well.
My name is Kevin K, uh, nineteen, eight, nineteen. Um, I think as far as if the current shop is run down when it comes to municipal employees, there's, there is minimums that they have to be allowed to work with. So if, maybe the argument can't be made for a new shop. My issue with this plan is this is way too extravagant. I mean, half this size, one bay with concrete, the other with gravel, who needs a lunchroom? Like, this is an imaginary employee that's going to come work on this stuff. An imaginary employee doesn't need a lunchroom. Like, there is things that you could do to control costs that I think sticks in a lot of people's craw here. And i- if you want to push, it's, it feels like you're going to push the shop forward, but if you're going to do that, can we at least do it in an expandable way? Like I said, if we concrete what, I fix heavy equipment for a living, like, this is what I do, that's why I make fun of the imaginary employee. And it's like, if you have one bay for, for fixing this, the other two could just be gravel, and if we just win the lottery in five years, we could concrete the other one. There is things we could do. I don't think we need to build the most extravagant thing right off the haw. It's not like we have a, you know, a tax problem.
Okay, so your opposition is to?
The extravagance.
Okay.
The size, because it's not just to build, but to run.
Okay.
Instead of four thousand square feet in the winter, we're heating eight thousand square feet. There, there's all those, if, if, if a storm damages the building, now we're replacing eight thousand square feet from a knock floor. Like, it, it's just that all adds up.
Okay, thank you.
Robert Keed, Southwest, twenty-six, seven, eighteen. I'm against this because of the vagueness of the whole time. A friend has also bought the shop, they've just got back into it, it's a brand new shop, uh, I've got the prices, the sizes. And more doors than what you're talking about, and it's a lot higher than you were talking about. And it's only up to eight dollars a square foot. Our, our friend here obviously hasn't been on that contract. But, uh, I don't know why we need a shop that's going to cost more than our brand new, I bought a new house, so I know the cost. A lot of people here haven't bought a house in fifty years, I don't know the cost, but why should we end up with a shop costing more than what my house cost? Per square foot.
Okay.
And well, I agree with the previous speaker, but yes, we can have somewhere to work at equipment. But we don't need the whole thing heated, we don't need the whole thing concrete floor, if there's equipment in the store, we need storage. We don't need a big mass working shop heated by. We don't need a big mass of working shop, heated by one hundred and twenty, or whatever it's meant to be. And if we heat in the whole thing, that's gonna be a cost. To us, not to the municipalities, to the taxpayers all the time.
How are you gonna, uh, thought to supplement up in winter time? Are you gonna park the graders in the winter?
Well, I have a friend that works in mine, and there is nothing stored inside. If they want to work on a piece of equipment, or need a piece of equipment, they go out and warm it up. And there are a lot more equipment than what's in the municipality, and that has to be run by the profits of the mine. So everybody has to work on their profits. You don't have to work on a profit, you just tax the people. It's easy for use, but you, we have to earn enough money for use, we have to earn, we pay dollar taxes, we have to earn to keep ourselves. It's easy to put them on a levy. I'm against it, and I think everybody in this room, about two or three people are against this because of the vagueness, the whole situation. We need the price, and we need to go back to, we're not even, haven't even gone to the drawing board apparently, we need to go back and review what we need. That storage, I think we need, there, someone's talking about the graders, the graders are all under three-year warranty. Keeping the graders, this is your problem, you have a warranty on them. So, the service guy has to come down, or they have to come down and pick it up and take it up to the shop, and brand or wherever it comes from, one or they go wherever. It's not your problem to supply, to work, to have to work on.
All right?
So, and you haven't got a mechanic, you can't keep, there's a switching, workforce is switching around all the time, how are you gonna get the mechanic to work in this? Somebody needs to work on this, you have to have a license to work on. They have to have this new equipment, us farmers, we're stuck with it too, we need, we can't get the, the logistics to work on this stuff. So how are you, how are you, how are you gonna work? Thank you.
Trent McCann, thirty-five eight nineteen. Question. Uh, those three doors you're talking about for this new shop, are they all on one end? Or is it derived from one side?
One side, one side.
One side? I've never been in the old shop, so I don't know if it's a neither or one. But I think the eight thousand square foot shop compared to twenty, what, two thousand, twenty-five hundred square foot, I'll do that now, it's, it's ridiculous. If you cut that in half, you might get more support. Thank you. You're opposed then? I'm opposed. Thank you. Because the size of the shop on the disc. In the back?
Kathy Keating, Southeast, twenty-four eight nineteen, I'm opposed to this bill as presented this evening. I don't know, and you have not presented where the nine hundred thousand dollars has come from, obviously you make reference now to plans, but that, again, all that backup, why you need that dollar value. So, uh, it's a little tough to hear, I wasn't quite sure, and I just want Joni to explain it again, because people have already maybe written in or emailed their opposition, and I guess that might count as official opposition? So the voices heard tonight, everybody stating their name and their land vocation, does that also count as official, uh, opposition against to this bill? Or are you still expecting us to write in?
No, a public hearing, you can either have written representation or verbal representation.
So everything tonight is on the record?
It is on the record.
I'm just gonna throw one more, we already have storage for the grader, say you want bigger storage, so why aren't we building like another, I don't know, sixty by forty shop heated to work on equipment, rather than building this massive eight thousand square foot shop for all of it? We've already got two storage buildings, correct? Why aren't we just building what we need, rather than, sorry, what you're dreaming of?
Thank you. Anything else? Yes?
Yeah, Mike Hawkins, sixteen eighty. The, um, I'm in favor of the building, but I'm certainly opposed to the process. This is like buying a pig in a poke. We, we don't know, you know, what's going on, I, um, my previous work, I looked at buildings and had to be in, managing the projects when they're being constructed, and when you get some of these things, like, uh, this gentleman here sounds like an engineer that you can work with, but some of these guys, man, when the engineers get going in there, the wish list that they like to see on there, because it's a, um, the higher the value of the, the building, the more money that the company makes. One building that, uh, that was built, that I was part of, that, uh, was already constructed, or the plans were done, had an in-floor heat, same area had electric force air, and also had baseboard heaters. And like, you know, the, the price went up, so we seen what we had to do here. There's probably ways you can scale back on some of these things, and you have the needs and the wants, but the, the nice to haves, maybe we don't need, and that's where you could probably save some, uh, some money. But with nothing to see in what we have here, it's pretty, you say it's a pig in a poke, right? It's just, you, you gotta give us something to work with, you know, he wants to work with you, but you gotta give us more than a scrap.
Everyone's talking about all this work getting done, like, are we planning on hiring maintenance staff to do work, like, as an RM?
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Well. What I mean is, if we're not hiring anyone to do this work, why do we keep talking about if work needs done, like, eight thousand square feet of equipment, it's crazy. If that was in the private sector, you'd be fired instantly. Well, that's just the jet.
Thank you.
Barry Fowle, Northeast, four seven nineteen. I have been in the old shop, and it's tight, it really is tight. But I'm not opposed to a shop, what I'm opposed of is the size. Because it's not just the eight thousand square feet, I don't know what size building is, even the four thousand. Do you have any idea what it costs to heat more expense? Even for an eight thousand to a four thousand, the electrical, all that infrastructure and everything will be a lot cheaper in a smaller building. So, like I say, I'm not opposed to building a shop, one of my points is the size. And.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Back to the levy, what is the pipeline then, railroad?
You know what it's about, Matt?
I knew it from assessment, but I don't know the number of parcels, but the.
Does the pipe lab have it on every parcel?
Yes.
Like on every quarter?
Yeah, it would be on every quarter.
But the other commercial buildings, it's just gonna be on a levy, like car yield?
Is there one, if they'd be one?
If it's one roll number, it is one parcel, if they have more than one roll number, then it is multiple parcels.
So it'd be actually better to go on assessment, wouldn't it, than they would pay more?
Could. Yeah, I, I don't know what pipeline would be.
Certainly the, certainly the pipeline would pay more on assessment than a per parcel.
So would the railroad, all the commercial buildings?
So would any property that has a portioned assessment more than a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, would pay more on assessment than what they would per parcel.
Well, yeah, that's quite a bit, isn't it? That'll, that'll definitely help with the small acreages.
Yeah, the small acreages, anything less than about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars portioned assessment would pay less, if it was based on assessment, than they would per parcel.
You don't think you use the road inspection?
Sure, I, I didn't, no, that, we did this on, so everybody in the whole municipality is paying for this shop. That was one of the things, we, we have to come together, we're not passing them anymore, and it's just a matter of, we wanna get everybody thinking that way. So it is gonna be all residential, and it's gonna be farmland, and it's gonna be business, et cetera.
So but isn't the commercial getting off easier?
They could, compared to the, to the, uh, assessed value. Yeah. But that, okay, once you do assessed value, then there's no chaos, you don't get an opportunity to pay it out without interest, you're gonna be on it for every, every year, that amount, and it's gonna be the interest added.
And the assessed value could change annually.
Yeah. Because your, your assessed value could go up or down.
So pros and cons to both.
Sure, fire away from this one. This shop you're referring to earlier, this RM shop that just is built? Built, what was the size of that?
It's approximately fifty-three by.
Fifty by fifty? Six, sixty, no, I'll get it.
Our existing shop was fifty-three by fifty, I think it is.
It's a new one built. The new one that's built is, is hundred by sixty, with in-floor heat and three eighteen by twenty doors, an office, a lunchroom, and a bathroom, and it's seven hundred and seventy thousand. And that was held with? Well, I didn't wanna get into. They just built a new shop, so. They just built a new shop.
William Molet, Northeast, thirty-five nineteen, has anybody even looked into fixing the old shop up, renovating it, you done it and Wauwunisa to the office? And it, it, you don't need all the space you guys are talking about, your graders are only thirty-four feet long. So why do you need a shop that's sixty feet? You're gonna part it end to end? And what are you gonna do with the rest of it? Graders are only so wide.
Okay, anything else?
Like Craig parks his tractor, doesn't, parks his tractor inside a heated shop, and tries to front it in.
Just one point I wanted to make, kinda, I think people got off on the track about repairs and whatnot, there was mention about, are we gonna have mechanics? I would think that the RM here works the same as all the other RMs work, but the, the operators are doing a tremendous amount of maintenance on the machines. They're doing the tiny, they're the guys doing the repairs, not, not somebody else going. So if there's, there is stuff that needs to be done on the machines day to day, they don't have somebody coming in to do it.
Anything else?
Mark Fenwick, Southwest, six seven nineteen, I oppose in the way you've presented it, I think you're, you're shooting for the moon. You can definitely do it smaller, even with, like, you're looking at heated storage, that's all you're looking at right now. You can go a smaller heated shop and cold storage, if that's the case, but this, I oppose the way you're doing it, the way you're, you're not bringing up information forward. It just seems backwards.
Thank you. Anything for you?
Oh, there's two over there.
You talked about office, uh, an office in, uh, that goes through, uh, maybe where the office will be big enough, if the divorce comes through there, that Wauwunisa's not part of it, we'll have our own office, we can see the world.
Yes.
What do you do with the shop in Wauwunisa?
It's, it's storing the equipment for around the town, the loader, et cetera, and other mowing equipment.
A loader?
Dump truck.
A dump truck?
Or.
The mower, two mowers? Two mowers. Is there an office in that shop?
Nope.
Okay.
Concrete floor.
So what will you have to store the one in Nesbit then? Two graders, a tractor, and a mower?
Loader.
And a mower?
You got a loader there, yeah?
We, we have a little loader.
Small loader in town and a large loader in the world.
So that's three pieces, what else? Yeah, I stored in Nesbit.
Key Sage tractor, we put snow blower on for it. And the, and the cat loader.
So a loader, a tractor, a lawnmower, a snow blower, and two graders. And the office is for?
We, we haven't, we haven't had any discussion on office, that office comes, that one is being built, that we know the number's from. That's where the office is mentioned from, that's not.
So right now, right now, the workers have no office?
Nope.
The graders?
Nope.
They have the old office. Okay, thanks.
I just wanted to ask, it's my understanding too, that, so our roads only get, like, grade eight out in the rural, Monday to Friday? Is it eight to four, or eight?
Yes.
So, so, or eight to five, whatever, so none of it on weekends?
Right.
So I, I ask all of you counselors, have you gave any consideration at all to the cost factor? In many different ways, but money is what I'm talking about, is they're only used Monday to Friday?
They're used if there's a storm on a weekend, or if we get behind them dragging, there's a grader.
On this side of the area. The, uh, the, our workpeople are unionized, so the union contract requires that they work from Monday to Friday. Anything beyond that is overtime, and it's up to their discretion, not ours, as to whether they work.
I guess my question is, is, does that justify this kind of money for storage? I mean, I, I haven't really heard, I'm, I'm not speaking for anybody else, but in my opinion, I haven't really heard anybody say they're opposed to a new shop. But that's, I, that's not what I'm hearing from people. But I mean, you gotta, you gotta remember, like, this, this shop, if, if these employees and the equipment is not being utilized to the fullest, that's, that's pretty expensive storage. So I think as a council, I wish that you guys would look into the whole equipment. Terry Nichols said, do some price compare, comparing, let, let us know. And it's, it's a safety issue too, and it's great to have a shop, I, storage is needed, but this stuff needs to be used to the max too.
All right. There is all representatives in regard to the continuation of a local improvement plan number forty-eight dash twenty twenty-five for building a new public workshop. Been dealt with, therefore be resolved at public hearing to be concluded, and council resume its normal order of business. Can I have somebody move that? Council Jones, secondor, Council Hatch, all in favor? Bylaw number forty-eight dash twenty twenty-five, being a local improvement plan bylaw for building a new public workshop, gets first reading, be resolved at the bylaw number forty-eight dash ten twenty-five, being a local improvement bylaw for building a new public workshop in Nesbit, be read for the first time. Somebody to move that? Secondor, Council Fisher, there's no discussion on our first read, all in favor? Be resolved, that this meeting is now adjourned, moved by Council Golett, secondor, Council Jones, all in favor?